So this will be the format. Each candidate will be given one minute for a self-introduction. And I will be your timekeeper. Each candidate will also be given equal opportunities to answer questions or share their thoughts on questions presented by the moderators. We'll have two minutes. And you'll have that time to answer that. Again, I will service the timekeeper. If we have audio questions submitted, they will be presented at that time after the questions that these ladies and gentlemen will ask. And finally, before we wrap up, each candidate will have one minute to tie everything up and to tell us why we should vote. Okay? So without further ado, we will start this little round of applause. Yes, ma'am? Yes.
First off, thank you for having me tonight. It was an honor and a privilege to be considered a candidate for the Loyd County Municipal School Board member. So I'm married to a farmer and a cowman. We raise seven children. And I'm a real estate broker. We... Lovington is our home. We live and work here. And we own a business in Lovington. We'll get into the other questions, but I hope to... I hope you get to know me tonight. I hope you get to know your concerns. And it's a pleasure to be here.
Good evening. My name is Bradley Bishop. I grew up here in Lovington. Graduated in 1999. Moved off, went to college at Texas A&amp;M Commerce, where I received my elementary education degree, early childhood education degree. I taught school in Waco, Texas. I taught second grade there for one year. Moved to Hillsboro, Texas, and taught school there for about three years. Married my high school sweetheart before I started teaching. And we started a family while we were teaching. Both of us are teachers. And she wanted to stay home with the kids. And so couldn't make it on the teacher's salary. So we moved back to Lovington and got a job in the local field, where I work now for Weaver Old Company. I'm the regulatory manager there. I have four kids in the school district. I'm a member of the person that met this church. I'm excited about this opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you so much for having given me the opportunity to serve as your school board member for the last six years. It has been honestly a pleasure. I have learned so much from each and every one of you guys. My views and my positions have changed so much because of the opportunity to work with you as a district from a completely different level. I am a born and raised Lovingtonian. I graduated in 2009, where I got the chance to go to Texas Tech University. And then I came back. One of the biggest reasons why I came back is because I love Lovington more than you guys could ever know. I fight hard for them every day. And I think that the biggest reason why I decided to get involved in our local elections is because those are the ones that matter. Those are the ones that actually make a difference in our community. And I want to be a part of that change and be a voice for the community as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming and thank you for participating. I'm Greg Maxey, and I'm running for my third term on the Lovington School Board. I married a young lady from Lovington who had a family connection here since 1912, 1906. And we raised our family here. I came into public education as a second career and fell in love with it because public education is foundational to our republic. What we are able to do for our future citizens in Lovington is phenomenal. I ran on a platform of safety, which at the time was safety for our students. Unknown that COVID would be on the horizon. But I made several promises, and I believe I've kept those. One is we haven't increased taxes on our property rates. We have maintained safety for our students. We continue to create a safe haven for them to learn and our staff. And we have increased teacher salaries so that teachers and the staff that work for Lovington schools have a professional salary that recognizes what they accomplish with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get all of these candidates around the podium. It takes a lot of work and a lot of determination from our office, so thank you all for doing that. Okay, so now we will move to the question phase. And each candidate will have two minutes to answer the questions. All right. Our first question is, what motivates you to run for the county board?
I have to excuse my nurse. I apologize. My motivation comes from the kids. It's a genuine desire to improve public education for all children. I want to give teachers a voice and listen earnestly to all of your concerns. I'm a lifelong New Mexico resident and a product of the New Mexico school system, public school system, as are my children. Lovington is my home. Simply put, I would like to serve the community better than that. I live here, I work here. And our youth, our kids, are the most impressionable and important group we have. Thank you.
Matty?
Yes.
So my opinion is I took you as an early childhood education. I have a heart for teaching them for kids. I don't have an agenda coming into this. I want to do the right thing for the kids and for the teachers. I want Lovington schools to be the best possible environment for the teachers, the staff, and the kids. Having four kids in the district, I want the best education possible, not just for my kids, but for all of them. Their education and experience in the schools are preparing them for college or a job or whatever path that they take after graduation. And it's important to me that we can provide the very best for them, for our students, and provide for the best resources for the teachers so they can be best equipped to prepare our kids as well. Thank you.
I am truly and utterly motivated by my brothers and my family members. Most households, especially in our community, are not made up always of a mom and a dad. Sometimes they are made up of other additional caretakers or additional family members that go by the rules. I've had the opportunity to help my mom raise my brothers and my sister, who are all Lovington graduates. My sister just started as a nurse in hospital in Albuquerque, and I'm really excited. But being able to be a voice for them and being able to continue to advocate for those families, for our community, is really what motivates me.
The reason I'm motivated to run is again, public education is foundational to our republic. It's a great equalizer regardless of where you are on the economic income. Our family, public education helped us to become the first generation within our family to attend college. It's important to remember that there are unfunded mandates and there are pressures from the state, there are pressures nationally to change public education. But every day I work in public education. Every day I work with our teachers and I see kids and I see the wonderful things that they're doing. And so I want to continue to advocate for local control. The best thing for Lovington's kids is local decisions and the community decisions that represent Lovington. I want to continue advocating for that and ensuring that every child has an opportunity, just like our children did. We went on to serve their country. We went on to become great adults. That same opportunity is there. I'm also running because I believe that we have a change happening in our society. And one of those things that we need is not every student is college-bound. We need to expand our career in technology education. I want to continue to make sure that we're investing in that and that we're doing really good partnerships with our neighbors here in Lee County so that we can ensure the kids have the career that they want to have, whether it be college or whether it be a career in technical field. I look forward to continuing to advocate for that.
Let's see. What specific strengths or skills or experiences would you bring to the board table?
Okay. At 41 years old, I do have quite a bit of life experience. As I said before, I am the mother of seven children, ranging from the age of 25 down to one-year-old. I have five boys and two girls. I had my daughter at 16. I was a teen mom. I raised two children as a single parent, and overcame many obstacles. So I understand that road. I married my husband 10 years ago. He is also a lifelong New Mexico resident and a product of our public school system. We raise five children together now. And so not only do I have that experience of being a mother, I went on to earn a bachelor's and a master's degree in business administration. So I do have the accounting and financial background. I am a business owner. I am very knowledgeable and well-versed with that. And I don't take the responsibility lightly to see how every dollar affects the child ultimately and to be mindful of that when making decisions regarding the budget. I am... So I sat on a board in Las Cruces many years ago for a community action agency of Southern New Mexico. I really enjoyed that. And I am familiar with the code of ethics and the responsibility for being a trustworthy public servant and member of the community. Some may call this a weakness, but I am coming in, if elected, as a candidate with fresh eyes. By that, I mean my husband and I made a decision to put our three oldest children into Junction Christian Academy. And that was based on our personal want or that we will teach to be done on a daily basis within the school system. And so we are looking forward to the day that all five of our children in a couple of short years will be Wildcats. And we're very excited about that. I don't mind my children more than my four nieces who attend the school system. I feel like in my heart, it takes a village to raise a child. And I feel like we all have the responsibility to be active members of our community. And you know, our children's curriculum is so important. Our children's safety and in the classroom is important. And so, excuse me for running.
Ms. Prudential?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So as I said in my introduction, I'm the regulatory manager for Weaver Old Company. And with this position, I work with many different people, from landowners to the Bureau of Land Management, Mexico State Land Office, NLCB. When I communicate with them, I have to be, especially with landowners sometimes, very level-headed and willing to listen. And that's something that I will bring, I think is a strength to bring to this table. Integrity is another thing that I think is a strength of mine. I want to stand up for the right thing for teachers, staff, students, whoever it is. I just believe that doing the right thing is the most important thing. As I said earlier, I was a teacher for a few years, so I can empathize with teachers' needs and concerns, with the staff's needs and concerns. I'm 100% a Lovington walkout. I was born and raised here, and I love this community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
So when I went to Texas Tech University, I had the opportunity to actually study abroad in a multiple of different countries, Brazil, Ethiopia, China, British Virgin Islands. During all this time, I was studying the different water management, water policies. So my bachelor's is in science. I have a strong background in that. I decided shortly after that that wasn't the correct route because what really needed was to focus on my community. And that's when I decided to come back. I graduated from my master's in 2019 for public administration, and I am currently pursuing my doctoral bachelor's in administration for organizational leadership. I think the biggest thing that I bring with me of experience that was actually my actual experience. I have a first-generation student. My parents came here with nothing, and they were able to make a huge living. When I talk about not having a parent's advocate, that is something I really hold dear because I didn't have an advocate. And that was something that I struggled with, and that really affected my learning and my education. Being able to have that kind of experience and understand what our community goes through and what our families have to endure really brings me, or gives me the opportunity to work with that and bring that to the table when I'm deciding the policies, when I'm looking over our budgets, when we're having those discussions. I understand and know our community because I am the community. My family, my brothers, my sisters, we're all Wildcats. We were born and raised here. We always hope to make the community better. So that is the experience that I hope to bring to the board. And of course, my six years of experience, I have sat on the school board for six years, which have given me the opportunity to really learn about policies and how things actually work when it comes to being a elected official. I think it's very easy to sometimes say, oh, well, they've said this, or they've said that, without actually understanding what it is to sit behind that chair at right. And so through these six years and the last years, three years, have been really different. And so that was the experience.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We appreciate the time. Ms. Massey?
I believe that what sets me apart is the fact that I have had the ability to collaborate with my fellow board members. And as the board has changed over the years, I've been able to collaborate and work with them. It's important to know what people's desires and goals and their values are and then be able to collaborate with them and come. Because each person as themselves, as a board member, has no power. The only power they have is when they unite in a majority. And it has been my pleasure to work on the board, to be able to have that give and take and be able to get to often any five oh votes. I work with our legislators in this area, Senator Kernan, Senator Diegoz, even Representative Townsend from Artigia, the minority leader. I've been able to work with them as we work on several pieces of legislation. I think my greatest strength is the fact that I work in this profession every day, and I work with the budget issues. And I'm going to tell you, budgeting in the state of New Mexico is really glissanteen. And it takes a lot of time to dig into it and figure out where those dollars are. And it's important that we spend those dollars. I have served on the audit committee. I'm currently on the budget committee. And I'm really proud of the fact that we have taken every dollar that taxpayers have provided to us and ensured that it was spent correctly and to maximize every leverage opportunity, including like bringing a swim team. We couldn't afford a new pool, but we could partner with the hospital. And by just a nominal amount each month, we've been able to create the opportunity for our kids. And there's 32 kids. And by the way, this is the first time they've been in the water in several months. And they got into the water, we go Monday to start swimming. But those kind of partnerships, I think my biggest experience is finding out what people's needs are, staying on the high road, and getting to yes so that we can meet the needs of our community and our students and our families.
Say thank you. All right. Do you have any questions? My question is, what are one of our weaknesses and weaknesses of our school system?
Well, those are all also not answers. One of our weaknesses is honestly our lack of ability to engage and get involved. I think as a community, we have our voice. And sometimes it's not heard. But sometimes it's because we don't get up and stand up and attend our meetings and attempt and question our leaders and ask and look at the package and look at the information provided. I think as a community, we can always do better to be more involved and to be more engaged with the community. However, our strengths really lie in our staff and our students. When I say Lovington is the best school district in the world, I really mean that. I convinced my friends from Albuquerque to move down here, put their kids in school here just because I know that the opportunities we can offer our kids cannot be given anywhere else. We're a small community with a huge opportunity, the potential. There are so many different avenues and services and different opportunities for every kid. There's something there for everyone. And that is all thanks to our ability to work together as a team and to be able to come out on top and always work together for our kids.
Ms. Prudential?
I think the greatest weakness that our district has is we don't have the time to celebrate our successes. We have a lot of successes. An example would be of the last five, Maddox Foundation Scholarship winners, three of those have been from Lovington. We have a number of kids that are successfully graduating from college. And we've been trying to keep track of them. And as we do, we find out that their years in Lovington are what made them successful as adults. I can tell you that's exactly why our children have succeeded as adults is because of what teachers did. Our teachers every day do a thousand unknown acts of kindness for kids. They're not really interested in remembering well. They're interested in learning. But they don't cite what we taught them, what someone specifically taught them as a concept. What they talk about is what a teacher did for them that provided hope, that provided opportunity. And we don't celebrate that. We don't communicate that enough because we have so many other pressures. And especially, I think, when we found out about Facebook the other day, that its algorithm only enhances a published text when it's negative. And I think that's one of our weaknesses. We don't celebrate the strengths of Lovington and the successes. The strengths, I think we have a great academic team. We do not have a number of long-term subs like the districts around us. We have been able, by having a great salary schedule, it's a professional salary schedule, that recognizes the work that our staff do, we've been able to fill all of our positions. Those, our neighbors around us, have anywhere from 10 to 25 long-term subs. I've had kids in other school districts that have not had a certified teacher in front of them during the four years they were in public education. That is one of the things that we don't have happening in Lovington. And I think that's something we need to celebrate. The strength is our administrative team and our teachers.
So I'm going to say that teachers, coaches, and staff Lovington, as you know, has a great small-town America feel. I know from personal experiences that the teacher, staff, and coaches all care for the kids. Communication between teachers and parents is a great strength. I mean, I've had teachers and principals give us their cell phone numbers and are very willing to communicate with us about the kids. The teachers that our kids have had are very kind, very caring. It means so much as a parent to know that my kids are truly cared for and loved and that they're given a great education. Lovington has a wonderful staff. There are not any specific weaknesses that come to mind. I know things can always improve. We, as a district, have the potential to grow and just to continue to do better and better. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm sure we all have widely differing opinions on this question. I agree with the entire panel. As I was sitting here formulating my script, teachers are one of the most underappreciated and sometimes unfortunately, undervalued members. They are the face and the first line that our children see every morning. And we all know of teachers who have influenced us personally very profoundly. Or we know of our child who has been influenced profoundly by a teacher. And so they are of the utmost importance, in my humble opinion. As a parent, we have certain expectations as well. My son attended special education preschool at Lano for two years. And my husband and I were absolutely delighted with feeling absolutely dialed in and just like his academic performance increased, his speech therapy increased. I think Lovington has a lot of strengths, namely being the teachers, and that our role is to support them. So I enlisted some help from teachers. You know, I made phone calls. I have curiosity. What do you think the weaknesses are? There's always something that can be improved upon. And so the feedback that I received was some teachers expressed more support for first-year teacher training, more teacher workshops, more assistance with newly implemented technology. And these are all reasonable measures that can be improved upon or discussed. But we need to listen. You know, it's easy to come up here and maybe make a broad, generalized statement. But if we can identify specifics, they can be remedied. Thank you.
Hey, I skipped you, Mr. Beership, and that's because not everyone wants to... Why do you even want to talk about that? So we're going to start with you this time. In your view, what is the role of the Teachers Association in this district?
I would just say that the Teachers Association or union, I guess, is the voice of the teachers. I'm willing to listen and understand what they have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Massey?
So the Teachers Association, I think, is a very critical role in our community. They not only speak for our teachers, but they are the voice. They are the ones that go to pass and stand up for them when there's discussions or there's hearings. So it's very important that we listen to them and work with them because they have a huge representation of our teachers. And if we don't work with them, then we're not being able to bring in our teachers on board and listen to their discussion. And sometimes, especially when you're working with such a huge group of people and everyone's talking at one time, it's better to have one group and one voice. And then you can push your agendas and your missions further. And so by working with them, we're able to work together and be able to start to help our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Massey?
I believe the importance of the Teachers Association is one of them is that over the years, it has provided the feedback, even when it wasn't safe to give feedback in the district. I'm not talking about current administration. I'm talking about past administrations. In the past administrations, there was... Teachers were to be seen and not heard. And so I think it's important that teachers have a voice. And this is an organization in which allows teachers to safely have a representation and be representative of what's taking place in the classroom. And it's not always pleasant to hear some of the things that we hear. But what they do bring to us is important and specific, the PD, some of the safety issues, and the fact that teachers within the first five years are struggling. And so I appreciate their voice. I appreciate the advocacy they do. And I appreciate their partner with us in making sure that our kids receive the best education. And it's just another group that I enjoy being able to partner with and work with.
So I believe the role of the NEA is as a... This forum, for example, has been hosted and set up by the NEA to bring attention to the candidates as a service to the public. I believe it is in the best interest of our students and school district to establish an environment of cooperation and not contention. I believe that the NEA should be used as a positive tool and resource for all teachers.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Beership? What would you like to add to our question?
Well, I guess, yes. I am a research agent. I work with the Lovington School District. And I'm invested here. And I want the best for the Lovington Walkout.
I would just like the community to know that local election patterns, please get out and vote. I think this is a very strong and capable board. And it only gets better when there's more people that actually go out and vote. For me, I would really appreciate the community's support. I have, again, served on here for six years, and it has been a wonderful learning opportunity. I have grown so much, and it's all done because of this experience. Working with you guys as a district and as a community has been one of the highlights, honestly, of my twenties. As I look to the future, I hope they continue to support me. And I'm a Lovington Wildcat, just like everyone else. I strongly believe and care for our community, and I'm here to fight for them. and I'm here to fight for them.
I think I want people to know that I've worked hard to earn the trust of the citizens of the community of Livingston. And I've worked hard to have the relationship with the staff and our administrators. When I decided to run for the board eight years ago, I did because my wife's grandfather was John Easley, whose name appears on many of the building plaques around here. I didn't have grandparents by the time... All my grandparents passed away by the time I was born. But John Easley was an outstanding man, a great community leader. And he and I talked often about how these buildings were built, how he saw a vision for public education. And I have enjoyed serving on the board and being able to continue that. And he was my mentor when he was alive. And he's my mentor as I discuss buildings and teacher salaries and budgeting and earning the trust of our staff and our administrative team. I am always indebted to the time that he spent with me. He was a wise man, and I was fortunate to be able to marry one of his grandfathers.
So earlier I failed to mention, I have taught college level courses and been an academic advisor at New Mexico State University. I've only taught adults. But that experience, especially in academic advising for many years through the School of Nursing and the College of Health and Social Services, there at La Cruzas, brought me so much joy. And so I do have that experience teaching as well. I don't know if that's a concern for any voters, but I wanted to also bring that up. I do chair the Committee for Finance at our church. Like Bradley, my faith is Christian. Mainly, when I was thinking about this question, I wanted to relate to you that I will be an involved board member. I heard somebody say they may see board members once or twice a year. And we work, we live, we play, we eat in our community. And anytime, if elected, I will be involved and I will be active. And if you ever see me out, feel free to approach me. And I'm always here to listen. So I read the Code of Ethics, and I understand the responsibility of this position as a public servant. I will adhere to you and promise to be fair, honest, not abuse my position for any personal gain, to work in a spirit of cooperation and excellence. And lastly, if I have a moment. Sorry, I'm scripted, but just a little nervous. So any decisions I make will be at the core of old-fashioned values. My husband Jeremy and I are choosing to raise our family with these core values. We are teaching our children to be respectful, self-disciplined, self-reliant, hardworking, honest, competent, and kind. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any audience questions that have been submitted? Mr. Maxi, this one is directed for you. Mr. Maxi, this one is directed for you.
Great question. I consider it. It was actually addressed by the court. When I was first elected, one of the first things that I did is I rescinded my position as a union representative in Livingston. I don't work in Livingston. I don't take calls from teachers in Livingston as a union rep. Actually, a union rep actually represents this district. Hannah Skender, at the time, attempted to sue me. It was taken to court, and the judge threw it out, saying that there was no conflict of interest, that the barriers and the policies that had been put into place had been taken care of. And he actually commended me on my ethics and the decisions that I had made to make sure that there was not an ethical conflict. And I've avoided by those. I have been an exemplary board member since the time that I was elected and will continue to go through those trainings and be considered an exemplary board member by the New Mexico School Board Association, which I also sit on as a board of directors. So I appreciate that the courts have decided that.
All right, the following question is for all board members. We'll start with Ms. Grant. Considering all the pandemic...
The last couple of years have been really hard for me. I think the pandemic has shown us that we think that our schools and our teachers are really the heart and the backbone of the community. Without our teachers, without our school district, who are we? What are we? Do we stand to be anything else? I think it's been hard, and there has been no right actors. It's been a learning curve for all of us. I don't think anybody had a plan. And no matter how hard we tried to plan, everything kept getting thrown out the window within a day's notice. I think moving forward, we should continue to increase and improve our communication. I think we need to work more with our legislators so that they are hearing our voices. As a school board member, our hands sometimes are tied a lot. The head really gets to decide a lot of things. And returning local control is not only important, but vital for our community. Without it, we won't be able to continue forward. I think that's the lesson that we should really learn from the pandemic, is that we know what's best for our community. Why? Because we're here. We see it. How else can we make decisions if you're not here? And that is what I would like to say, Ken.
Will you repeat the question, please?
And the funding and the training to do their job effectively, to reach all students and to support the students who do not have access to remote learning. And plain and simply put, our teachers are superheroes because none of the world had ever navigated these waters or experienced this. And my heart went out for the teachers. I hated hearing any sort of criticism for them because they are working behind the scenes, day and night, harder than you or I or anybody that we know, with a heart for these children. And none of us had ever experienced anything like it. They need the tools and the resources to complete their job and to serve all students.
That's a great question. I appreciate your answer. I'm gonna start with this. Instead of talking about what we could have... That's a great question. And now that we're kind of in an endemic, I got to working on this right away. And one of the first things we did is we made sure that our teachers would not lose pay because of whether they became, had a close contact with COVID or whether they became, had COVID. Because if you remember, after March 13th, there was a lag time before it became into Lee County. So it's not a matter of, this is what I did or what I thought I would do. This is what I did. We ensured that FFRA and the CARES Act covered our students and covered our kids. We immediately went to work and put in hotspots. We began to immediately look at the fact that we had to deal with kids who may have food deprivation. We have about thirty percent of our kids that have food security issues. And for our staff, we made sure that they would not lose a bit of pay. We created the ability for them to not become financially struggling. And this was important for our community because every dollar that we pay a staff member in Livingston, it turns in Livingston four times. I'd like to see it turn five, but it turns four. But we put into effect safety. We put into effect many things. But the number-one thing that we did, when the state didn't want to do it, we put in the fact that our teachers wanted our kids in person. And we started doing that. And we did it safely for staff, and we did it safely for the kids. And I am very proud of the fact that we, with local control, made sure that we had in-person learning because that's what our staff wanted and that's what our families in Livingston wanted. And I'm proud of the university I took on that from parts of North.
I think it's important to have a plan. Because we, I feel like we... There were a lot of people, our company included, in Oldfield that were caught unprepared for virtual learning, virtual meetings. And I think it's important to keep up with the technology that comes out. I think Zoom was an excellent lifesaver, obviously, right for a lot of these kids. And we use it daily at our office. And we've installed new cameras and new microphones. And so I think it's important to do that and to keep up with that changing technology. And I also would use, you know, I have four kids at home that have all done virtual learning and have been there with these teachers as they go back, wear masks. And if that's the worst we have to do, then let's go. I think it's important to keep everybody safe, but to also look at what works and what doesn't. And I feel like with the kids at home, I can see that firsthand on what works and what doesn't. So, thank you.
Any more audience questions? Okay, so we will give you each...
You know, I am a teacher at heart. I love kids, and I love teachers, and I love teaching. I do not have an agenda coming into this. I want to do the right thing. And that's what I tell my kids, me and my wife talk about, is to do the right thing and to just love your neighbors yourself, right? And that's what I want to do. So, thank you. To just love your neighbors yourself, right? That's what I want to do.
I would just like to again thank you guys for the opportunity to be, to serve and to have staff on this board for six years. It has been a great experience. I have appreciated and come to love and care even more about education than I thought I ever could. As we move forward, I promise to continue fighting for our kids, fighting for our staff, being the voice of the community. I believe representation matters. I believe you having a voice and having someone that you can connect to on this board is very important. That is how you know that somebody there actually cares and feels and understands what you're going through. And I want to be that voice. Like I said before, I am a born and raised Lovettonian, and I hope to be here for many more years. I hope to continue to improve my community because if there's anything that I believe in, it's the potential that Livingston has.
I am proud to serve on the Livingston ward, and I would like to continue to serve. I feel that as we move forward, I'd like to see us expand in working with Hobbs on the C-Tech Building and expanding CTE for our kids, as well as expanding opportunities for going on to college. I work hard every day. I start early in the morning, and I live and breathe public education. I look at policies across the nation, which ones would fit for us, which ones don't, which ones do we for sure not want to have. I work with our legislators across both sides of the aisles and have had a successful record of making sure that policies and statutes that have been passed benefit our kids. I am always advocating for local control and making sure that our staff are compensated for the thousand and one unknown kindnesses that they do for our kids each day, how they put themselves out there. And last but not least, none of us have talked about it, but I have a proven record of voting for the bill levy. In regards to who you vote for tonight, I ask that you vote for the bill levy.
So again, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. What I want you to take away and know about me is that I'm relatable. I want to be able to relate to you on every level and hear your concerns. I want to be known for being an honorable candidate, an informed candidate, and I do have a learning curve. I just feel like it would be an honor and a privilege to be able to serve as a board member and to help make and formulate policy and decisions that affect our kids. You know, I would hope for age-appropriate curriculum and for curriculum that really shapes the minds of our children in a very wholesome and appropriate way. There is a lot going on in the world right now, and I think that children are being bombarded from... Thank you.
Well, thank you all for the questions and for answering and giving information that the voters want to know. I want to thank you personally for running. Well, thank you all for the question again. And for sharing the information that you all were there, just want to know. So I want to thank I personally for answering the office. Thank you again. Let's give him a hand, folks. Let's give him a hand.